All right, we will go ahead and call the Tuesday, June 18th, Commission Meeting to Order. We're going to start with a moment of silent reflection for our first responders and members of the Armed Forces. That'll be followed by an invocation by Pastor Joe Moore with the Rivers of Living Water Word Ministries, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Commissioner Darrell Lore. Thank you, sorry about that. If everybody will please rise for a moment of silent reflection.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this fine day that we are coming here in your name. We ask to your blessings to be upon each and every commissioner that is represented here today. We ask for your blessings and prayers upon their families and loved ones. Lord, as we are assembled here today, we pray, Father God, that you would grant the leaders of this community, these commissioners that are here today, grant them the wisdom, the strength, and the knowledge to make good and sound decisions, not only for the people of this county, but that those that are in this county can take those decisions and live peacefully, that they can grow in unity, and begin to build and rebuild this county into a place that will represent you and all that you represent in the earth. Lord, we thank you today for all things and everything that will be said and done on this agenda. Bless the families that are here, that have come out not only to be a representation of this county, but to make their voices heard in this building today, that they will be echoed to all of the residents that are not here today by the decisions that will be made. We give you all of the praise, we give you all of the honor, and all of the glory. These things we pray, in your darling Son, Jesus' name, amen.
Join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Welcome, everybody. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Mr. Rigby called, and he's under the weather. He will not be able to be here today to present before the county commissioner.
Okay, we look forward to having him reschedule. Anybody else?
Better chair move approval as amended.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And with that, we'll move on to proclamations and presentations. All right, we are going to actually go with the recognition of the UF IFAS Extension Indian River County Volunteers. Welcome.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Get all of the troops down here.
There is a lot of you. It's good to see you all in green today.
That's everyone. Okay, I wasn't sure if you wanted to say anything. Well, we just wanted to say thank you so much for the opportunity to recognize all of our volunteers today. So this is just a small sampling of the 4H and Master Gardener volunteers that we have here in Indian River County, supporting our UF IFAS Extension program. They are truly the heart of our program. We like to say we have the best Master Gardener and 4H volunteers in the world, and we believe that that is wholeheartedly true. They give so much of their time, their energy, their knowledge, their skills, their passion to our extension programs, and we would not have the amazing programs that we have here in the county without them. Truly, they are what allow us to give the reach and impact in our community that we have, and they're also the reason why we have so much potential to grow that reach and impact. And so, we really appreciate the opportunity to, you know, have them come here and be recognized for everything they do for our community, for our extension programs. They mean so much to us, so we appreciate this opportunity to recognize them and show them how much they mean to us. And just to give you a quick little tidbit of information to show how much they do for us, last year in 2023, our volunteers contributed 9,149 hours of their time to extension programs through the Master Gardener Program and the 4H Program. And that is equivalent to $269,000, a little bit more than $269,000, that they are giving back into our community through all of their time and expertise. And so, they, you know, give us a huge push, both in terms of the support they give us, the reach they give us, and they effectively double our staff time with all of those hours. And so, we, again, truly could not do it without them. And we wanted to just give you a symbol of that. Time and contribution with this large check. So we would love to get a picture here in just a moment, but I did want to give our volunteers an opportunity to speak if they had anything to say.
Of course, we'd love to hear from the volunteers. I know some of your volunteers standing here, and they are not shy, so why don't y'all tell us a little bit about what you guys are doing individually as volunteers?
Anybody who wants to speak, no pressure. I told them they didn't have to.
Okay.
Hello, my name is Heather Booton. I am 16 years old and have been in the 4H program for almost 12 years now. Throughout my life, I have gained so many opportunities that 4H has made available for me. I wouldn't have the confidence, leadership skills, and I wouldn't be up here being able to talk to you. Now that I am a senior guiding younger members, I can see how positively impacted, or how 4H has positively impacted their lives as they grow, as the same way it did for me. So I just wanted to give a big thank you for all the volunteers that have given their time to make this possible for kids like me.
Heather, Johnny says hi.
Good morning. My name is Violet Crock-Malney, and about 20 years ago, I became an employee of Indian River County. I started as a receptionist in the Extension Office, and over the years, I have been trained in multiple disciplines, including Master Gardener, which has always been a goal of mine. And when I retired about two years ago, the first thing I did was re-up my Master Gardener certification so that I could continue being a volunteer. Over the years, I have seen our Extension Office being able to keep its doors open because of the volunteers. When we went through several budget cuts, when we went through COVID, we were working remotely when we had to. Without the volunteers, this Extension Office would not be able to give back to the county like we have done so. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Charlie Flornoy. I just wanted to thank you for the opportunity to serve. It means a lot, once you get to retirement, that you have something that gives your life real meaning. I spend most of my volunteer time with the passions I have, which are invasives, removal, native plants. I work the plant clinic at the Sebastian Library, and we've done a couple of demonstration gardens. And, like I said, it's been very meaningful, and I'm grateful. Thank you.
Thank you. Don't be shy.
So eight years ago, when I retired, my name is Lena Strumas. I got into the Master Gardener program, and I think of myself as a cedar. I start all the seeds for all the children's gardens and any of the gardens that we do. We have a wonderful garden over at Gifford Community Center, and my passion is vegetables, so I do a lot of that work. Thank you.
I love that you describe your job as being a cedar. That's fantastic. I want to be a cedar when I grow up. Anybody else? Well, we do appreciate all the volunteer hours. I know many of the IFAS programs are very volunteer-dependent, and finding volunteers and people that are committed to those programs and sharing that message, whether it's 4H and Youth Development, or Master Gardeners, or, I mean, you guys even have STEAM programs and all sorts of fun stuff going on in the schools and outside. So, and for the young and old, I think that's, plus your extension outreach, you know, to the farmers and the ag community. So, we do appreciate it. It couldn't happen without the volunteers. You guys make this program work, and I know we have one of the most active Extension Offices in the state, and I'm always very proud of that when I'm up in Tallahassee and other places where they're talking about it. So, that's because of you guys, and we appreciate it. Thank you very much. Of course, come on, take a picture.
We applaud them.
Of course, and you guys can say whatever you want, too. It's not-
Good work.
A lot of hard work. Oh, thank you. Wow.
You've got a whole line of paparazzi.
Thank you so much. Thank you. All right. All right, that was fun. Our next proclamation is going to be recognizing Juneteenth. It'll be read by Commissioner Fletcher and presented to Officer Donald Hart, and I think you also brought a contingent with you.
We have a few, Hart.
So, yeah, there's a whole Hart family here. Welcome.
Here comes Victor.
I brought him out of retirement.
Let's applaud Victor again. Well, thank you, Madam Chair. I have the distinct pleasure of presenting a recognition of Juneteenth. Not a celebration, not a reminder. We don't need a reminder. What we need to do is say that the scenario, the way of life, the way that humans conducted themselves, will not happen again. So it's a recognition. So with that, I'd like to present the proclamation recognizing June 19th as Juneteenth. Whereas Abraham Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation, a presidential proclamation and executive order, on January 1st, 1863, changing the legal status of more than 3.5 enslaved African-Americans. Whereas on June 19th, 1865, General Gordon Granger arrived at Galveston, Texas to read the Emancipation Proclamation, announcing the freedom of all those enslaved in the state. Whereas Juneteenth, derived from a combination of the month and the day of June 19th, offered is referred to as Freedom Day, Jubilee Day, Emancipation Day, Independence Day, or Black Independence Day. And whereas in 1979, Texas became the first state to make Juneteenth an official holiday, and other states following suit to the, over the years. Whereas Emancipation Day is celebrated at different times throughout the United States because of the time that it took for the Union generals to reach the Southern States after the war had ended. And whereas General Edward McCook first read the Emancipation Proclamation in Tallahassee, Florida, on May 20th, 1865, 11 days after the end of the Civil War, and two years after the proclamation was first issued by President Abraham Lincoln, freeing those enslaved in the Southern States. Whereas in 1997, Florida recognized May 20th as a statewide celebration of emancipation. Now therefore be proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Indian River County, Florida, that the Board recognizes June 19th as Juneteenth, honoring the end of slavery in the United States, and further proclaims May 20th as Emancipation Day in Florida in Indian River County, making the anniversary of when slavery began, became, illegal in the state of Florida. Now therefore, it's duly adopted this 18th day of June 2024, signed by all five county commissioners.
Thank you, and that's something that we wanted to make sure we put in the records, where it's showing that emancipation really happened, and then in May 20th, that they stood on the steps of Tallahassee and read it to the state of Florida, letting them know. So that way, we understand here in Florida that it's May 20th, and Juneteenth is the national one that was recognized. Thank you so much for that.
Thank you. Thank you. Daddy? God bless you and all the work that you did.
Commissioner Fletcher say thank you.
Thanks for being here.
He's 93 years old.
God bless him.
Can we take a picture? Can we get a picture? You go and grab and take a picture.
Just coming down there, Don.
He's going to come down there.
Madam Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
If I may, I just want to remind everyone that in honor of Juneteenth, Victor Hart Park will be in full bloom this Saturday with a celebration from 10:00 to 3:00, reading of proclamations, music, and booths for your perusing pleasure, and please join us out there, 10:00 to 3:00, at Victor Hart Community Enhancement Complex.
Fantastic, that sounds like a good time. All right, there are two informational items. One of them is the solid waste disposal district closures and collection service changes for July 4th, so everybody look that up so you know when to take your stuff out to the curb. And then we have a proclamation designating the month of July 2024 as Parks and Recreation Month, and July 19th, 2024, as Parks and Recreation Professionals Day. So, please thank your parks, workers, and all the people that are keeping that going. We have a great Parks Department, and we appreciate all that they do. With that, we'll move on to consent. Commissioners, I would like to pull 8H for discussion. Does anybody else like to pull anything from consent? Anybody from the public wishing to pull anything from consent?
Madam Chair move approval as amended.
All right, I have a motion, and I'll second that. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. So Commissioners, I just pulled 8H because I understand we need to have a discussion on quorum. I understand there's some concerns about that.
Yes, Commissioners, we have revised the Environmental Lands Program Guide, and my apologies, it should have been included with this agenda item. However, when we revised the guide, the change was made based on recommendations from the Environmental Land Acquisition Panel to reduce the quorum to six. And of course, we're happy to have any discussion or recommendations from the Board on the quorum. The issue has been that with a seven, which was the original quorum established with seven, is we're having difficulties meeting that quorum in order to conduct business at these meetings, which are right now occurring on a monthly basis.
And there's nine people on the panel?
That's correct.
So six is still a majority, for the most part. Susan, did you-
That's, please pardon my voice today. That's accurate. So it's been an issue trying to get quorum. So that's kind of what it came from, was quorum. There is a resolution attached here, too. Per our code, we need to have a resolution adopted to adopt any sort of panel, since this panel was dissolved back when it was, I think it was ELAC back in the day, was sunsetted. So we need a new resolution adopting and setting forth the rules and regulations for the ELAP, so that is attached here today.
Thank you. And I have no problem with the quorum change. I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew that and was aware of that, so it didn't cause any surprises in the future. Okay.
We have this challenge with other committees as well, and the complications of life the way it is, and commitments, and not being able to be at a meeting at a certain time, really sets back a lot of great action and staff time that was worked, and then has to be delayed again another month or two. And reducing the number actually is a majority plus one, and I believe that it still holds great intent for the citizens in which we serve as well. So with that, motion to approve.
I'll second that. All right, any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right. So that takes us through the consent, and we'll move on to constitutional officers. Leslie, welcome.
Good morning. Thank you for having me today. I'm here to request the revenue that we receive from verifying candidate petitions, initiative petitions, and data lists rolled over into our current budget. We've verified 27,613 petitions and fulfilled 38 data requests, so it's a little over $3,900 in revenue. And what we want to use this money for is you all so kindly allow us to use the truck that you acquired when you purchased the land from Mike's Cut Rate Furniture. So we have the truck, we're using it to deliver our elections equipment, and we would like to put a wrap on it because it looks not too official when we're delivering furniture that says, voting equipment that says Mike's Cut Rate Furniture. So that's what we're asking for the wrap.
I can't imagine, Leslie.
This is going to be an even up exchange of right of way along 74th Avenue. As you can see in your backup, there's some right of way that was dedicated back in 1956 that is kind of floating in the property owner's property. What we're going to do is swap that out for the right of way next to the canal and where 74th Avenue is located so that we can get everything straightened out. That will be coming up to you on July 2nd at a matter held by the County Attorney's Office, and I thank you.
All right. Thank you. With that, we'll move on to county administrators matters. First item is approval of the AM 204.2 at-will policy, amendment to AM 212.1 termination, amendment to AM 801.1, behavior of employees, amendment to AM 804.1 customer service, and amendment to AM 807.1 disciplinary process. Mr. Administrator, welcome.
So Madam Chair, members of the Board, can I take first, first take a moment before we do this to introduce, yesterday, our county administration ombudsman started, and I'd like to take the opportunity to introduce Amber Revere. And you can come on up, Amber. We're gonna make you give a 10-minute speech. But so just by way of introduction, Amber comes to us with ample county experience, having worked for Orange County, Miami Dade. From Miami Dade, she did strategic planning and business planning for individual departments. She's also worked for Bell Harbor as a CFO. She's a former administrator. And, and lastly, she worked at St. Lucie County in innovation and performance as a navigator. So we are very excited. Amber does have a master's degree in urban regional planning, has worked also privately as a consultant, helping, so she understands processes, understands the development process. And so she already has an email that was sent last week in her inbox with a couple things on which she'll be working on. So I want to just introduce Amber and welcome her to the senior leadership team. We're excited she's here.
Welcome, Amber. It's good to have you.
Good morning. Thank you so much. Very pleased to be here and I'm very happy to serve Indian River County. Thank you so much.
Well, welcome aboard. We've been anxiously awaiting that position, so we're glad you're here and I'm sure your list will get longer.
I will continue to add to the list.
For sure.
And tenaciously move through it. Thank you so much.
Wonderful. Thank you. Welcome aboard.
Thank you for that indulgence. So this item is the at-will employment policy. And I have emboldened the primary portion of the policy, but it's, generally speaking, the policy is going to affect, it's directed towards those employees who hold executive, managerial, or critical positions that support the Board of County Commissioners in terms of, that are designated at-will. Those positions would be the deputy assistant county administrator, the department directors, assistant directors, division heads, managers, or positions with managerial authority, if you will, or responsibilities directing employees or managing, managing a program, as well as our commission assistants who provide vital support to all of the, each of you as the commissioner, commissioners. So the policy was revised, and I'm just gonna, just to highlight some of that, and it was based on some concerns expressed. We wanted to make sure that it was reflective and had a little bit of a process in there for people. So prior to an initiating manager or director obtaining, you know, implementing this policy, they must obtain the human resources director and the county administrator's approval. If approved, an employee who receives notice of separation, they would be placed on administrative leave with three days' pay, three days administrative leave pay during those time. The employee could request a hearing, a meeting before the county administrator prior to the date of separation. And that would give them, if they haven't, well, listen, I understand that the county administrator signed this, but I haven't met with the person, him or her, and so I would like that opportunity to meet and give my, my side of the story, if you will. If the employee requests the meeting, the employee would remain on administrative leave with pay until the meeting scheduled, which would occur within five days, and a decision is made by the county administrator. That decision, of course, is final and binding. So just want to rough, kind of review some of the policy and some of the employee notification that occurred. Roughly, this affects 90 positions that are, we currently have an employee in those positions. There are some positions such as, you know, Amber's, the county administration ombudsman, the natural resources director, the assistant county administrator, they were already hired at-will. And as like when we knew, we've extended an offer to the public works, new public works director, when that person comes aboard, they would also be at-will. So they would, there's some positions that, that will be, it's in addition to more than the 90, but it's just roughly 90, but it's just, these are 90, about 87 employees that are affected. We did, I mentioned, clarified the process based on some feedback from employees, as with some that met before as well. What I would say is we just, we did distribute the policy to everyone that's affected and the revision. And then we also held two Microsoft team meetings, one at 10, one at 2, last Wednesday, and a total of 62, unduplicated, so because some attended both, but employee meetings and answered any questions that they may have had. We also, initially, we, we worked with the county labor's attorney and they provided their opinion. And then with the revision and based on an expressed concern, we went ahead and sought the county labor attorney's review of the revision. I provided each of you that and, but it's, it was found legally sufficient and not in violation of any federal and state employment law. And then there's some other proposed policies with this. Two of them are related to be consistent with the incorporation of the separation under at, at-will employment. That would be the first one, AM 212.1 termination. And then the last one, under AM 807.1 disciplinary process. The two, and you know, 801.1 in the second bullet is about behaviors of employees. The intent there, as you've read, it's, you have a strike-through version of that. It really emphasizes, you know, you know, that we serve the public essentially, that we are public servants. And then it also amends and deletes provisions of conduct for which an employee is subject to disciplinary action. 804.1, again, focusing on the fact that we serve the public and the public service is customer service, we strengthened and enhanced our customer service policy to where it's setting courage. We kind of put responsibility and we added some other words in there, but clearly defined that we are a customer service oriented organization. So why? You know, one, I would, I would tell you, because this is a question that's been asked, is this is consistent with other agencies and local governments within the state of Florida, within our own county, and within the Treasure Coast. At-will employment is a common practice and policy. It happens to be state law. It's consistent with our adopted strategic plan goals related to governance. If you recall, one of the priorities in that process was to start updating our antiquated policies. This policy goes back to 2010 and 11. It's unique. I will tell you that I believe we took a measured approach on this in terms of holding it to the administration, to those that manage people or programs and higher, plus the commissioner assistants and the assistant to the county administrator. If you look at what the state did, they went down even lower. And we didn't do that. We felt it was appropriate to, these are the 90-plus important, or people that will help direct the organization consistent with the direction that you provide in terms of making sure that we're all on the same ship, in the same, rowing in the same direction, we're on the bus, we're going in the right direction, and we're not having issues. So toward that end, really does, is it defines the employee and employer's relationship. At the end, it's a mutually beneficial relationship. It promotes the public interest. Again, we serve the public. If the public articulates concerns to you and you set a policy, then it's our job as administration and our management team to move in that direction. So I believe it promotes responsiveness and accountability and essentially ensures critical positions or staff with individuals who are aligned with the county's missions and values and are working in support and the direction of the Board of County Commissioners and county administration. Additionally, one of the things that it does do is it opens up, because absent having, being at-will, you have limitations in terms of, you know, if you both determine as long or mutually beneficial, is it opens up to where you could provide up to 20 weeks of severance pay. So a couple of common myths about at-will employment, that there's no protection for employees. This proposed policy in no way negates, change, supersedes any federal or state laws protecting employees. It is illegal to, you know, to fire, it is based on any protected class such as race, color, national, or national origin, disability, age, gender, religion, mineral status, medical condition, or sexual orientation. Doesn't change that. It's illegal to fire an employee who takes time off under the Family Medical Leave Act, files the workers' compensation claim, or serves, takes jury duty. It's also, and this I think is important, it's illegal to fire an employee for, for the purposes of retaliation in terms of if they were a whistleblower, reporting an employee's, employer's fraud, waste or abuse, corruption, wrongdoing, illegal or unethical activity. It's illegal to fire an employee for retaliation that report on safe working condition, object to or refuse to participate in activities that violate a law or regulation, somebody that might testify or provide information to a government agent who's maybe holding a hearing or investigating, you know, the county, or disclosing or threatening to disclose information about activities or policies that violate law, or for somebody just asserting their, their basic legal rights. So with that, you know, staff's recommendation is that you approve the policies as presented. I do think in the end, at the end of the day, it's a vital tool to ensure we have the right team on the field. More pointedly, to ensure critical positions in the county, as I mentioned before, our staff with individuals who are aligned with where we're going as a county and moving in that direction, and they're consistent with the mission, the values, the visions, in support of, you know, the Board and in terms of its direction as well. So I'll return to the Board with the recommendation that you approve these, these policies.
All right. Thank you. Commissioners, questions?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Fletcher.
I just wanted to say that I appreciate the explanation because as the concept of at-will comes to play in the arena, it is often misconstrued with at-risk. And that's the mantra. I will say it's not the case. You brought up 2011, 2010. I don't think any of my colleagues were here. I do recall that conversation, and it refers back to a time when the commissioner assistants were at-will. I will tell you that there was more cohesion, there was more communication, there was more reliancy, it was organizationally sound, and there were other positions like that. In an attempt to make things consistent across the board, because we have other entities we're dealing with, it was brought up that we would give, go back to the Employment Rights Foundation. And while I could say that it appeared that it did grossly affect the day-to-day operations. And I, I believe that you believe exactly what you're rolling out, and organizationally, I believe it is sound. We were there once before. And throughout the years, there has been certain agreements or contracts or memorandums when employment took place, which placed us back into the employment rights category and out of the at-will, which is consistent with all other, just about all other counties. I know when we go to conference, people think that this is an odd place, that our assistants are not at-will and the management team is not at-will. So I fully support the recommendation and your request, but I'm sure that others want to speak.
Other comments, Commissioners? Commissioner Lohr?
Yes, and good morning again, County Administrator. So let me think of the process for a moment. Department heads have a conversation with an at-risk, at-will employee. And the, the predetermination hearing, if any, would be held by them or advanced to you?
So essentially, I mean, so I, I think there's a differentiation between performance and then this notion, the philosophy, the view, where the organization's going. If you're not, if you're not in line with that, then I mean, you could be doing, you could be performing, but you, you could be creating problems. You could be created, becoming a negative, you create a negative work environment which affects, and I'll use the example of a rowboat. If we have everybody in a rowboat and you have somebody up front and somebody up back rowing in opposite directions, we're, we're never going to land the boat where we need to. So what would happen is the manager or the department head would have a conversation, say, hey, listen, here's where we're going. This is the policy that was adopted. This is where, you know, you need to support this. And if you're fundamentally opposed to that for whatever reason, then we need to have a bigger conversation. And if that continues, then they would, they would go to HR, human resources would evaluate, well, is this a performance issue or is this an issue that, you know, because this isn't designed to circumvent the performance issue. You know, we have policies there and we will hold everybody accountable, the management team, for enforcing those policies. But if, if it's not that case, then human resources must sign off on it. And then they would come to me, you know, with the department head, say, hey, this is the issue I have, that the human resources, I agree. And then I would make, I would sign off. And then they would get a notice of separation that would put them, being separated essentially four days later, four working days, but they'd have three days of administrative leave with pay. And they would have to notify us prior to the date of the separation that they want a meeting with me to say, hey, listen, there's other information that I don't think that was presented to you, and you need to know this. And that gives me the opportunity to, one, hear their concerns, hear their side, and then investigate, and they would stay on administrative leave with pay until that hearing, and then also me evaluating and understanding and then making, rendering a final decision.
Right. So typically, it's either a performance issue or a discipline issue. Is that correct?
Generally speaking.
Right. So department heads are going to have to communicate, document, coach, counsel, discipline, dismiss, or suggest dismissal. So there's got to be something enacted to where our leadership teams realize that before it gets to us. We're talking something serious here, obviously. Secondly, the, the message has to get out that the at-will is not a scary word. In fact, it's not a scary word. It's typical. I mean, if you've worked in the private sector, if you worked in Vero, Sebastian, Brevard, St. Lucie, that, that's typical. Let me ask you this. It also excludes anyone represented by collective bargaining.
That is correct.
Right. And they have other mechanisms.
That's correct. And within their collective bargain agreement, there's a very, there's set out provisions related to discipline, just cause, and things of that nature.
Right. And for the other Commissioners, this is consistent when we hired John and interviewed John about customer service, not to mention the strategic plan and the surveys that have already been mentioned. One thing I want to ask about, how do we ease our at-will employees as we transition in the fact that, are there other benefits? Because let's be honest, this does kind of change the tenor of their employment. I understand up to, to, was it 20 days or 20 weeks?
20 weeks.
20 weeks. Is, is that typical for any other employee?
Well, that, that statutory provision-
So there's got to be something enacted to where our leadership teams realize that before it gets to us. We're talking something serious here, obviously. Secondly, the message has to get out that the at-will is not a scary word. In fact, it's not a scary word. It's typical. I mean, if you've worked in the private sector, if you've worked in Vero, Sebastian, Brevard, St. Lucie, that's typical. Let me ask you this. It also excludes anyone represented by collective bargaining.
That is correct.
Right. And they have other mechanisms.
That's correct. And within their collective bargain agreement, there's a very, there's set out provisions related to discipline, just cause, and things of that nature.
Right. And for the other Commissioners, this is consistent when we hired John and interviewed John about customer service, not to mention the strategic plan and the surveys that have already been mentioned. One thing I want to ask about, how do we ease our at-will employees as we transition in the fact that, are there other benefits? Because let's be honest, this does kind of change the tenor of their employment. I understand up to, was it 20 days or 20 weeks?
Twenty weeks.
Twenty weeks. Is that typical for any other employee?
Well, that statutory provision only applies to if you have, if you are at-will. Absent that, we've been able, I think, two occasions, you know, it was six weeks.
Right. And are there any other potential future benefits for at-will employees in the future?
Not that I'm aware of, but I would say organizationally, and I, your question about benefits, because one of the concerns was, will this affects my benefits? It doesn't affect anybody's benefits. As you all know, we had, like today, you passed the, under the consent, the rate increases, or actually, there was no rate increases for the employer or the employee. We don't differentiate. That would cause an administrative burden when it comes to the benefits. But what I would say is, as a board, you are investing not just in our management team, but in all our employees. We expanded benefits last year in terms of providing vision, medical, long-term disability. We opened the health center. The last meeting, you just expanded the services that are going to be offered at the health center, and we also have a compensation study. So I would say that you're investing in all the employees, and that investment, especially when it comes to the management team, from myself all the way down to those that manage people or program, should be held accountable, because you are investing in the employees to make sure we have the right employees here, and that people that are going to, you know, staff members, team members, that are going to do the right thing and follow the direction that the board, you know, and which you're getting from the community, that the community wants us to go. So there's no specialized benefits for, that are being created, other than the ability for the severance pay.
Right. Well, I wouldn't include the things like the health clinic and other things, because that was, you know, collectively for all the employees, whether they're, you know, at-will or not. So the message to the potential at-will employees should be to understand that their immediate supervisors or their department heads, whomever, will go through the process that they should be going through already, coach, counsel, discipline, dismiss, before it comes to, before it even gets close to your desk. And that way, they would have the opportunity to either get on the bus or get off the bus prior to, and there's also part of the policy that talks about if they voluntarily separate.
That's one of the, because right now, if you do that, if you don't provide, since it's an at-will relationship, mutually beneficial for both parties, if somebody doesn't provide notice, they could lose payouts for certain benefits. Now with this, you could say, this, I can't agree with this, I just don't, I don't like this policy, I think, you know, the board and administration's heading in the wrong direction, and, well, I gotta stay here three weeks in order to get paid out, you know, so I'm like this. So this removes that from them. So that, there's one incentive, or one benefit, it's because it's mutually beneficial. So they don't have, they are excluded from the notice requirements if they decide to resign on their own, because they don't think it's, it's no longer a good fit for them.
Right. And also, and additionally, if they aren't comfortable with being at-will, could they potentially laterally move or downwardly move into a different position that is not?
If there is a position that is available, we would certainly, you know, look at that if they apply for it. And I also would say-
As long as their performance and discipline is-
Yeah, correct. But I would say, you know, the power of this rests with the employee or our team members. You have control over whether or not this would ever even come into play in terms of, are you doing what the board as a whole has said, this is where we're going, or county commissioner says, administration says, we're doing this, we're having this initiative? But if you're going to sit in the back and you're going to cause problems, or I use the bus analogy for Jim Collins, if you're on the bus and you're in the wrong seat, or your seat's turned and the other person's turned, and you're interfering, then it's like, listen, you gotta get this way, turn that way. So it's like, it's a matter of holding yourself accountable to make sure, recognizing as a public servant, you know, we're, yes, I get it, we're going, and I don't think it's, probably wasn't stated well, but currently have a property right, if you think about that, a property right to the job. And again, measured approach, management team and higher, not the entire organizations, which would be, I would say, most other organizations in the state of Florida and in the southeast region. I think at-will employment is predominant throughout the country.
Understood. And in your cursory interviews with the affected employees, I believe it was you and Assistant Zito, about how many of those employees did you chat with, discuss? Any questions, concerns that were egregious that they may have brought out? In other words, is there fright in the air?
So I think, you know, initially, some of the comments, I had, did have one, two, three meetings with different employees. I also had some directors come to me. I had one director come to me, and they said, listen, these, here's two employees that I'm not sure if they apply to this, the criteria that they manage, you know, I don't think they apply. So what we did is we went, we got the job descriptions, we evaluated them, we say, and I said, you know, you're right, this one doesn't apply regardless of their title, because when I look at the core functions of the job, they don't bear any responsibility in terms of coordinating a program that could, you know, they have a decision-making authority that could impact the county of where we're going. And then the other position, it did. And then I had one director bring to me, you know, an employee, said I think they should be, pulled the job description, looked at it, and I said, no, they should not be it. So there was that, and then I'm going to go to, try to go to some of those comments, because they do, the comments, but I think most of them were really, you know, why now? The conversation regarding severance, the perception that there was a hit list, that everybody that received the email was on the hit list, and that's, that was the perception, and that's why we built in the revisions to show that it emanates from the department, you know, in terms of that they, because they're closest to the employee. They know whether or not the employee's rowing in the right direction, or is on the bus moving in the right direction. Benefit changes, you know, they talked, somebody brought up private sector about, well, hey, listen, you know, this is going to, you know, this is going to, now our benefit changes, they could change our benefits. You know, and that largely happens in the private sector, not in the public sector. The retroactivity, you know, the fact that the due process, so we, again, amended to build in a revised process at least, because I would say this, and I'll come back to that, but the severance, the no benefit, then the history of it. So when we revised it, we sought the subsequent opinion of the attorney, again, our labor attorney of 20-plus years, and their comments were that, if anything, we revised it to be even more, from his original opinion that it was legally sufficient, was that we, you know, revised it to be even more employee-friendly, in terms of, you know, to the benefit of the employee. I think it's up on my desk, his opinion. But I think I provided each of you. So he found it completely legally sufficient, it was, there was a process there by what all the employees were acknowledged, they received the initial policy, they received the revised policy, they're able, and some may be here to talk today, and, but I would say is, we took into account that consideration that the county administration was just going to kind of have meetings and like, okay, it's not working out. I mean, it's, no, it's coming from the department head, the manager, up. Except for the department directors, that they report to me.
Right, I understand. So back to the question, what percentage of the employees that we've chatted with, less than 10% had some concerns?
Well, those six concerns out of the, yeah, I would say so. But they were probably universal, they may have been universally, I wouldn't say that they were the only ones, those were the ones that spoke up. You know, we emphasized it was safe, but again, 62, I think it was, unduplicated, that attended. We had some people that declined. I happened to ask one, it's like, I've always worked at-will, I understand what at-will is, had somebody that didn't work at-will and said, I get it, I work for government. You know, if I'm not doing the job that you want, or going, you know, believe in the policies or the procedures and where we're going, then I'm not the right fit.
Madam Chair, one last question.
Sure.
In your training and experience through the years, do you, do you see, or have you seen any hesitation of employees not at-will, not wanting to promote through the agency, because, you know, let's say they're a rock star employee, because they don't want to be reclassified into at-will?
Mr. May.
I would say, no. If you're a rock star employee, you have no concerns. If you're a rock star employee, why would you? It's usually to the contrary. Somebody that, they meet their qualifications, but it's just like, you know, I mean, I'll just, that's been my experience, you know, and-
And finally, just so the board knows, and they probably do, most of the recent hires have understood that upon applying for the job, and the future ones obviously will, which probably should have been changed several years ago.
Yes, I've been very open and honest with you from day one, that I was surprised at the policy in terms of the applying Fourteenth Amendment constitutional protection and property rights to job, I mean, I just, in the state of Florida, but southeast region and largely across the United States.
Right. And for the record, for any rumors that are out, this is my final question, Madam Chair. This didn't originate with a singular Commissioner?
No, no. This, you, the person talking is the one that reviewed the policies and has been reviewing administrative policies, and I said, this is not, as we try to change the organization and move the direction, this is a tool. If we have somebody that, you know, because otherwise, you are expediting what could be a long, arduous process, where you play the game, you get back in line, and then you kind of start, and then you go start reverting back to your bad, your former behaviors in terms of like frustrating the process, frustrating the direction of where we're going, and so I don't think, I think it's a tool. It's a tool. And again, every employee has the power of whether or not this applies to them, no different than I do, or anybody else, you know, the county attorney, deputy county attorney, the deputy county administrator, the assistant county administrator, we have a, we're all, these are not like line-level people, these are managers and above, these are professionals, and so it would apply to them, yes.
Great, thank you.
All right.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Just one other thing.
Okay.
I'm glad that the sheriff brought that last item up, because I recall the consultant, the face, the expression, that we were not at-will. And in addition, we've operated this other policy for over a dozen years. Yeah, it's been quite a long time, well, 2011, so over a dozen years, and I think that was the comment, and it was brought up by the consultant, actually. You had discussed it, discussed it openly with all of us as well, that they were quite surprised. I did bring up that when we go to conferencing, that we were one of the very few, if not the sole, operators under that other policy. Again, it was suggested, that policy was actually suggested by a Commissioner who's no longer here, and I guess it was sensed that it was a good way to operate, but that was, that was done many, many years ago. I just wanted, but thank you for bringing that up.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Ehrman.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'm glad to see us moving forward in this direction. I think it, I think it needs to be defined. I think everybody's role needs to be defined, what their responsibilities are, what they're not. Florida, obviously, is an at-will state, so that is there already. I look at this like a, like a sports analogy, you know, you know, I love my sports, and I look at this as like, we are the team owner with the rest of the citizens of Indian River County, we are there to carry out the mission, and you're the head coach of the team, and you need everybody to be on the same playbook, playing by the same, playing the same way, moving in the same direction, whatever play you call, they need to execute. I think that's, I think that's extremely important that we do this, because I know that I have, and all my fellow Commissioners, we've all made customer service, as you mentioned earlier, a number-one priority for this county, to move forward with quality customer service and get out of the days of old and move forward and move ahead with new invigorating and inventive ideas. Sometimes you are going to get somebody that does disagree with ideas, but this is the opportunity for them to shine, to come back to you as the administrator, say, Mr. Koenig, this is why I don't agree with this, and let you say, but yet still stay on board should the decision that you make and the board makes moves ahead. It's okay to disagree in a professional way. But if somebody is not on board with the mission of what we set and what you're, you've been assigned to carry out and what you want to, and what you want them to carry out, I do not want them on my team, because it's team first. It's not about me, me, I, I. And that's where we, that's where we, that's what we need, and that's who we need in here. I think you're assembling a great team, I think everybody is, I think everybody will be on board, and I think they should be on board. I've been on the other side of it on the collective bargaining thing, where, you know, people are protected by that with the collective bargain, I've seen faults in that too, to save an employee that wasn't, shouldn't have been saved. I've seen that happen too. So I think that this is a good policy, I think it's very clean, I think you've taken the time and energy to look at it and evaluate it along with your staff. I think we're, I think we're in the right place. And again, I would agree with you, sir, if anybody is a rock star, or you're a good employee, I don't think you have anything to worry about in that, being an at-will employee, and I don't believe it should be considered an at-risk. It's what, in any business in the state of Florida, or anything that you do, you'd be, you can be an at-will employee. So I appreciate your effort, I appreciate your staff's effort, and all the other folks that moved ahead with this, but I do, I do support this, and it can always be changed and tweaked if it needs to be at a point in time. So that's where I stand, Madam Chairman, I fully support this.
Thank you. Commissioner Moss.
Yes, thank you. I think this is long overdue, and thank you for taking the time and the effort right now to make sure that we've addressed it as fully as you have. The focus is on customer service, I think this will go a long way toward ensuring that everyone is, as you said earlier, rowing in the same direction. I think we need to do that, and it's also fair to all parties, to the employee and to the public, to the community that we serve, and that's, that's the goal for everyone, every single person here. So with that being said, I'll move to approve this. I'm going to read the whole thing. Approval of AM 202.4 At-Will Employment Policy Amendment to AM 212.1 Termination Amendment to AM 801.1 Behavior of Employees Amendment to AM 804.1 Customer Service and Amendment to AM 807.1 Disciplinary Process.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second, and then I just want to say a few things. I agree with everything that's already been said, and what I, how I look at this is coming from the hospitality industry, and I know Commissioner Fleischer has experience in that industry as well. But ultimately, government is a part of the hospitality industry. We are providing a service to the residents who are our customers. Unfortunately, unlike the restaurant or the hotel business, the customer has no choice but to come and take advantage of the services that we offer. There are no other places to go for some of these. If you do not have somebody on your team that is providing the service the same way consistently across the board that's expected by the policymakers, which is the Commissioners, then you are never going to get your hospitality business where you need it to be. It takes, if there's a direction at the restaurant, if there's a certain attitude, a way that I would like a server to take an order or interact with a customer, and they are taking that order, they're putting it in, it's going into the kitchen, but they are not interacting the way I want them to represent me as a business owner, and you have customers coming in that say, I don't want to sit in that person's section, not because I don't like your restaurant, but because I don't like the way that they serve me, that's a problem. And in government, people don't have the luxury of not requesting to deal with certain people or positions. It's the same in the kitchen. If I have somebody who can cook a burger to temperature, awesome, but if they are not plating it and seasoning it the way that I've put the policies in place and the procedures in place, and I have people that come in and say, who's cooking in the kitchen tonight? Because that determines what they're going to order off of my menu. That's a problem. That's a major problem. That is a problem with consistency, and that's a problem with messaging, and that's a problem with, with the service that my employees are providing. that my employees are providing. So we have, to those that might be concerned, I understand that this is a change, and change always brings up concerns, and usually those concerns go to worst-case scenarios. But we have disciplinary processes in place. We have other policies that deal with people not doing the nuts and bolts of their jobs, and there's processes in place for that. This policy is really, in my opinion, meant to give the tools to address the issues of attitude, the issues of culture, the issues of undermining policies that this board has put in place and expectations that we have asked people to get on board with performing. We want you to treat the customer, our residents, a certain way. We want you to administer this program with a yes attitude versus a no attitude, or whatever the case may be. And this policy gives the tools to address that. If you are on board with the direction that the county is going and that the policymakers have put in place, you will have absolutely no problem. This is not anything you should be concerned about. But if you're not, then that's a problem not only for the organization and the policymakers and the direction we're trying to go in, but that will become a problem for that person. So I agree with everything that you guys have said. I think this is long overdue. And I think that the other policy changes that are also included in this item are in line, and this gives us the tools necessary to kind of go in the direction that we'd like to go. So with that, I will. Open it up, yes?
If I may.
Of course.
Couple of things. If you read the administrative manual, the term vested right, due process, Fourteenth Amendment, property rights, those are very strong words. And in wrongful termination cases, they're very fact-specific. They depend on the who, what, where, why type of ideas. So it's difficult to come across with a blanket opinion on something like this. But here, what is happening is that we are taking a right away from 90 employees, the right to progressive discipline. That's one fact. There is no compensation that is being made for taking that right away. Have we done this before? Another fact-specific thing. Yes. Back in 2011, I believe it was, the board did not like the idea of employees retiring with huge amounts of annual leave. So they changed the policy and procedure manual to cap it at 30 days. But what they did more importantly is that they grandfathered those employees hired before 2011, when that policy was enacted. So they would be able to go out with their full vested right of annual leave banked up. You know, those are the two things that would give me concern if this were to be challenged by the group, especially that strong language that exists, that that right is being taken away.
Thank you for those comments, and I think, I appreciate them. I feel like the board gave this policy, and the board's job is to create and change policy. We do have a letter from the employment attorney, and if somebody wants to challenge it, that's always their right, irregardless of if it's legally sufficient or not. I mean, people do that all the time, and I personally have no concerns, but I do appreciate the raising that issue. It's something to think about for discussion.
Thank you.
Suzanne?
Yes, Human Resources Director Suzanne Boyle. I was just wanting to make sure that we provided our employees who might be present here.
Yeah.
The opportunity.
I'm going to open it up for everybody, but I always need somebody to keep me on track, for sure.
Thank you so much.
All right, with that, I'll open it to the public. Anybody from the public that wishes to speak on this item, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Susan Prado. And because of guardian at lightum exception, I would request not to state my address on the record.
Okay.
But I am an actual citizen of this county, born and raised, and still to this day. So I just have two really, just a couple really quick things. I currently am at-will, so I understand what that means. I understand it can be like a scary word. I'm at-will. I've been at-will. I will be at-will for a very long time. So that's not a concern as far as changing the at-will. My concern was when I reviewed this, it appeared that the staff agenda item said that it was specifically to be at-will, but there are other several areas in the policy that are being changed, not specifically at-will. There's a couple of different things in here that I just wanted to point out that I thought were, since they were not brought up. In other words, this policy changes, the rest of it will affect more than just the at-will employees. So to say that it only affects the 90 is inaccurate because the other policies are applicable to all other employees, myself included, because my contract only excludes me from 807. So I will be asking to renegotiate my contract based on some of these changes. So with that being said, if we look at number 801 dot 1, Sub C being insubordinate or by willfully ignoring, disobeying, or refusing to follow direction from a manager or supervisor of the county concerning a job-related matter. Totally agree you should not have an insubordinate employee. I can tell you some of the concerns that I have heard over the time from staff coming to me with questions on things being legal or illegal. And as a person who holds a license and who has to sit there and respond for my license, as well as other employees that hold licenses here in the county, such as engineers, have a concern if a supervisor is telling them to sign something that they believe is not legally sufficient or is illegal, or something that is not sufficient to engineering standards, they could be facing backlash with their license. So if they would be facing backlash here as well, so I would just ask if it could be considered, if something could be put in there so long as it's not deemed illegal or an affraction of that sort.
I think there's another policy that deals with that issue that you've raised that we talked about earlier. So I understand the concern, but there's other policies, none of these policies stand alone, as you know.
Correct.
They are referenced, cross-referenced across the board, and there is another policy that deals with that type of being asked to do something illegal.
It's a matter of federal and state employment law that you can't fire an employee for retaliation because they have been, they object to or refuse to participate in activities that violate law or regulation.
Yeah, but I appreciate you bringing that up.
Or a malfeasance or a misfeasance. That's not to say that the license was a protection. The license is the knowledge and the ability to do what has to be done. So I.
I just, I just want to make sure.
I don't know if I agree with that because they're protected.
This section would apply to me as well with any new supervisor that would come in. So I just wanted to at least state that. Secondly, if you look at what was crossed out as Sub C, it's possessing firearms and other weapons on county property. So that was crossed out. That's now allowing employees, whoever, to bring firearms. I just, if that's crossed out, if you're wanting to allow them to bring firearms and weapons onto the facilities, I think if we could just reference to the Florida statute where it talks about, it can't be during meetings. Because that is, it specifically says it can't be during county meetings. I just want to make sure we're following that.
Next thing, this policy emanated from the fact that the state changed the laws, and the county cannot adopt the policy, they never updated the policy to where you can restrict an employee's right. I mean, with this policy right now, I'll tell you right now, I'm in violation because I have my concealed carry weapon, you know, locked in my car. And anybody else that has, that exercises their Second Amendment right, it is a state law that you cannot carry a weapon into a meeting of a governing body. It's already covered by state law.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, and those were the only two things that I just have a concern.
Just want to touch on the insubordination. That is merely clarifying the definition because we have had instances where people have like, well, I'm not sure that's what it means. So that's all it does. It clarifies. And if we're really dealing with an issue about splitting hairs on insubordination, that's a bigger problem.
Okay.
Commissioner Moore.
Madam Chair, I just want to add, if we have a manager or a leader that's asking, for example, a P E to sign off on something that does not seem accurate, then we have bigger problems than we thought.
Yep, exactly. All right, anybody else? Okay, seeing none, there is a motion by Commissioner Moss with a second by Commissioner Ehrman. No further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And with that.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I just want to ensure that the, I asked the county administrator that this was submitted, the letter from Bentonwood?
I can make sure it's submitted as part of the record.
Is that submitted as part of the record?
I can, I will provide Randy a copy of that to go with Leah Jett's item.
That's a good point. Thank you. All right, at this point, we're going to take a, I'm sorry Suzanne, a five-minute brief. Yes.
All is well.
(laughing). (inaudible). 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 (inaudible).
You know, as you all are aware, I've been here a little over two years. When I first started here, we were in the process of renewing a permit for a facility that doesn't even operate. And I questioned why we were doing that. And so about a year ago, we started a process to actually have the permit removed from that facility. We have no interest in using that facility. We were maintaining the property for perhaps, we had a reuse plan that said we may need a storage tank over there for reuse and reevaluating that. That really is not going to be necessary. We don't have any ability to get any additional customers over on the barrier island. So using that site for reuse really doesn't make a whole lot of sense. So now, about a month ago or so, in April, actually it was in April, we actually received approval from DEP to remove the permit. So we no longer have a permit on site. And, you know, what we're looking at now is a couple of things. Right now also, you can kind of see the buildings that surround the guts of the system. Sea Oaks, we've had a lease with Sea Oaks to actually lease the property for their maintenance purposes. And so they have a lot of maintenance facilities on site. In addition, in that little red area, there is also a cellular tower that has been placed on the site and has been there. So we have a lease for them. So those are certainly some things to consider, you know, as we move forward. But essentially, what we're requesting today is to place this property on surplus and allow us to authorize us to place it up for sale. We don't see a continuing need for it. So we would like to consider selling the property and actually getting it out of our hands. And with that, that's kind of what we're asking for today.
All right. Commissioners, questions, comments, concerns? Commissioner Lord?
Yes, Madam Chair. Good morning, Sean.
Good morning.
With respect to that decommissioned permit, would we be able to access that another location in the county? In other words, does it just go back to the state? Or can we put that in our pocket and say?
No, the permit's no good anymore. I mean, essentially, the permit goes away.
Okay.
You know, and permits are very site-specific. So when you get a discharge permit, it's specific for that location and that discharge point, if you will. And actually eliminating that discharge permit, it's not like we can transfer it to someplace else. We would have to apply for a whole new permit if we were to build a new plant.
Okay. And if we were to sell the property, would we retain the royalty to the cell phone tower? Or would that go with the sale?
I think, you know, there would have to be some sort of agreement in there that maybe an easement is in place for that. And we would somehow perhaps, we would like to maintain the royalty. And, you know, that's certainly something I think that would have to be incorporated in any sale, you know, in any kind of agreement that we would have. Is that a possibility? How would we do that? What would that look like? Because you'd also need an easement to actually maintain access to that cell tower, which, you know, in there, you're kind of in the south part of that property, there is an access point that comes into that. So we would, you'd need to maintain that, you know, that is part of it. So, you know, that's certainly something I think that we would like to consider in the sale of the property, for sure. But I don't know how that would, I mean, that's a negotiation that we'd have to get into with whoever, you know, offers it, offers us a deal.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Ayrman.
Thank you. Sean, what do we have? Let's say we sell the property. What are we, do we have to do an environmental assessment on? Do we have to tear down the building, the thing, the stuff that's there? What do we have to do with the property? Anything, which are responsible?
Great question. Yeah, I mean, I think we would likely have to do, as the seller of the property, doing what we call environmental assessment, phase two, which is a pretty in-depth environmental assessment to make sure that there's been no contamination left by the facility itself. You know, we had diesel plants, you know, diesel storage on site. We had backup generators, the plant itself, you know. Hopefully, it's a concrete structure. Hopefully, it wasn't leaking. But obviously, you needed to do an assessment to make sure there was no leakage into the soil and under the ground. So we would need to probably do some soil samples and do an in-depth assessment of the site to make sure that there's no environmental contamination. Now, if there is, I mean, there's always options. Either you, again, you negotiate in the sale of the property to have them do the cleanup, or we would do the cleanup prior to that. And then if the building needed to be, you know, obviously, there's some demolition that needs to occur. Again, is that something we do? Or is that something that we negotiate, you know, in the sale of the property? Hey, we'll give you a discount because we realize you're going to have to do demolition. So I think all of that would essentially be part of the negotiation.
That's all I got.
All right. Commissioner Moss.
Do we know, can you tell me the size of this piece of property? And is there any kind of appraisal, so we know the value of it?
We don't have the value of it. We would obviously have to have an appraisal done at this point. I mean, right now, we're just asking it to be surplus and to consider it for sale. I think the property is roughly about an acre. What's that?
Two point four.
Two point four. See, call Sea Oaks, they know better than we do. So it's about 2.4 acres.
Okay.
Bill, Commissioner Moss, maybe this would be helpful. Bill, can you just briefly go through the process of what would happen once, if we were to declare the surplus and advertise it for sale? Because I know that there's a couple of different options. And we haven't done that in a while, so it might be good for the commissioners to kind of refresh our memories.
Thank you. We can take two different directions on this property. We can put it, we can declare it surplus, advertise for bids, and sell it outright to the highest bidder. Would that include the cell tower or not? That would be up to the board to decide. As far as the second choice that we can use, if the board determines that because of the shape, location, size of the parcel would be of a benefit to one or more adjacent property owners, we could negotiate directly with that adjacent property owner. After we strike a deal, the statute requires us to go ahead and notify the surrounding property owners and public notice, publish, public notice in the newspaper of the proposed sale. If anyone comes forward, if two or more adjacent property owners come forward and object to the purchase price, it would have to be publicly bid. So there are the two choices. Sea Oaks, as Mr. Barquette will explain in just a little while, I would imagine, has approached us and would like to take the latter of those two approaches.
So, but either one requires us to declare them surplus?
Yes, that's correct.
That's step one. And then step two is, do you want to put it out for open bids? Or do you want to negotiate with surrounding property owners because of constraints on that property, either to size, location, access, or other factors?
That's exactly correct.
Okay.
So would this come back to us, then, to make that determination? I mean, because right now, we don't know the value of it.
No. Okay, so the issues, it has nothing to do with valuation. You either, you declare it surplus and put it out for bid and go through that process of coming up with a bid package and blah, 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 which would include valuation, phase two environmental, all that kind of stuff. Or you declare it surplus and with the negotiation with the neighbor's option, which as part of that negotiation would then require some type of valuation, phase two environmental, all that kind of stuff, because the neighbor's going to want to know that as well. And then when a package is put together for one or the other and a deal is kind of reached, it comes back to the commission for final approval of either the negotiated deal or the bid package. Correct.
This is the first step. The question is, do you want to declare this surplus? Or do you want to hold on to it? If you do want to declare it surplus, which path would you like us to go down?
Correct. And then all the questions that you're asking about valuation, that stuff, come secondary to that.
Madam Chair.
I would just encourage you to kind of, as you take the first approach, leave it open, because unbeknownst to many on staff, you know, the former IT director was, had engaged a firm, looking at, and they received proposals and forwarded me a proposal. And I'll just say, it's a pretty hefty amount, but so I would just...
For the cell phone tower itself?
I've got to clarify all that. I literally got noticed like late last week that they were like, hey, sent you an email. And they called. So it was like...
Okay.
But it's a, so I think we need to investigate, look at it, you know, whether it's just the cell tower or the whole property.
Okay.
And Madam Chair, just real quick, too, I just want to clarify it to John's point. We have long-term leases on that cell tower as well. So we already have obligations for that cell tower. So somehow, we would have to carve that probably out of the cell because, or included, I mean, so there's some complications there, for sure.
So, okay. Would it be easier, because I see Mr. Barquette in the audience, and I will definitely give you time to speak, but I'm going to assume that Sea Oaks is also interested in the property. And my concern is, we have, if we have some email about a cell phone tower, whether it's the property or the carve-out or whatever, I mean, do we need to table this until we clarify that, so we know or not?
No.
Okay.
We have to, all things aside, as far as this rogue offer that has come in, we have not declared the property surplus. We have to go down either path after we declare it surplus. If, you know, this other party is still interested, hey, you know, we'd be happy to talk to them.
Okay.
That's the way the board wants to...
Okay. I just wanted to clarify, because I figured that was going to be the next question. Commissioner Flesher, I think you were next.
Madam Chair, thank you.
Yes.
And while I look forward to hearing from Council Barquette, as we always do, I will make motion to move this parcel surplus as a very first step.
Okay. We have a motion to declare the process surplus by Commissioner Flesher, with a second by Commissioner Ayrman. Anybody else have any comments or concerns about just declaring it surplus?
That's all we're doing today.
Anybody from the public? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries on declaring it surplus now, Bill and/or Sean. Do we need to have the discussion of why Mr. Barquette, I'm assuming, is here regarding, is it, are we declaring it surplus and negotiating with the neighbor? Are we declaring it surplus and putting it out for bid?
And I'd invite Mr. Barquette to come forward at this point. We have met with the Sea Oaks people. They have expressed an interest in purchasing the property. Again, we're at the very early stages of this. There has been no price talked about. We have the cell phone tower that is there that we would have to take a look at as well. So, you know, plus demolition of the place.
Okay.
And there's a lot of moving parts.
Mr. Barquette, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Bruce Barquette, representing Sea Oaks. Could I have the picture put back up, please? So the property is at the conjunction of those two yellow lines. And everything to the west of the property is owned by Sea Oaks. Everything to the north of the property is owned by Sea Oaks. Everything to the east of the property is either Sea Oaks or A1A. And everything south of the property is owned by the state of Florida. So the only adjacent neighbor is A1A and the state of Florida. We would urge you to take option two that Mr. DeBraal pointed out. Sea Oaks has already been doing investigation and recognizes that the cell phone tower is going to remain the benefit of the county. We'll do an easement and let the county keep the royalties. I mean, that was never in question. We've also started looking into the demolition costs for the concrete structures sort of there. And that's going to have to be, it's going to have to come off the purchase price one way or the other, no matter who you sell it to. But the third point is, if you look at the location of the property, if any other owner were to purchase that, that would just be an intrusion into the Sea Oaks project. Sea Oaks originally owned this property. It gave it to the county in 1989, and I'm pretty sure nothing was paid for it. It was just a wastewater treatment plan. And that's what the way Mr. Pinto was operating at the time. And so there's a bit of a fairness question here. If you take the second route that Bill talked about, and you're, and we're unable to negotiate a deal that the county is willing to accept or is agreeable to the county, then you can always go to the first route. But if you go to the first route and take it off for public bid, there's no going back. So we would urge you, for all those reasons, to allow Sea Oaks the opportunity at least to negotiate a purchase with the county, acknowledging that we've already done research. We understand there's an underground storage tank that's going to have to be dealt with. There's a concrete structure that can have to be dealt with. There's a cell tower that we're perfectly willing to negotiate with the county, let the county retain it and retain the royalties with an easement. That's something that we can easily work out. So anyway, for those reasons, we ask you to take option number two that Mr. DeBraal described.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioners.
Any questions?
It seems blatantly obvious that it should be at a bare minimum a right to first refusal on any front because of the manner in which the property is couched. So with that, I believe that the second option is the only option unless we were able to give the first right of refusal for the property. That may become complicated. So I would motion to go with the second option.
I would second. I would also agree with that, Madam Chairman, because Bruce is right, that we, they gave us that property, they should have the, they should have the option to enter into negotiations with them, that we can enter and negotiate with them. They can tell us we don't want it, then we can go back to a second option. So yeah, I would agree with that.
But with that, with Counselor stating the understanding about the cell tower and the new information about a possible envelopment of the cell tower and an easement for the cell tower, I think that this is clearly the choice.
Okay, so there's a motion, hold on, there's a motion to enter into the negotiation process with the neighbor now that the property has been declared surplus, that neighbor being Sea Oaks, by Commissioner Flesher, seconded by Commissioner Ayrman. Commissioner Moss, you have a question or a comment?
I think it's, I think it's both, basically.
Okay.
I'm concerned about this, choosing the process, and I understand there are two options here, before we know the value of this land. I mean, we just, we have no idea what it's worth. And our first responsibility is a fiduciary one to the taxpayer. That's our first responsibility. So to choose the process without knowing the value, again, in my opinion, is premature. And I'm even surprised that it came in this way, or that we're even considering it today, because the recommendation is simply to declare the property as surplus and authorize its advertisement for sale. I mean, that's what was publicly noticed, you know, if you will. That's what, that's what people, that's the expectation today. So I think we need more information before moving forward with this.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Administrator, do you have a question?
As part of that process, we would get an evaluate, or get an appraisal. Yeah, we would get an appraisal for the purposes of negotiating. I mean, clearly, we know that there's a third party that negotiated with others for the sale of this and have sent us a letter, but, and I'll follow up on that as well, because that obviously would affect, you know, to make sure that the county taxpayers are appropriately put in first place.
All right.
Can I just, sorry, just say one thing real quick. Council Barquette's right. I mean, I think originally, this property was actually a package plant for Sea Oaks property. So the land was originally actually owned by Sea Oaks. The plant was actually owned and operated by Sea Oaks.
I'm actually surprised there's not a reverter clause in it.
And so, you know, honestly, it's...
We took it over for, I mean, my understanding of it, we took it over for them because it was small and we were trying to unify services and have an opportunity in the future to provide reuse water if necessary.
Right.
It has proven, because of other expansions in our system, that's not needed. And, you know, I, honestly, 2.6 acres, if anybody else does come in and try to do anything, it's almost a non-buildable lot by the time you do all the infrastructure and stuff that would be required for a standalone project. So honestly, I was going to ask you, Bill, but we had gotten past that point, if there was a reverter, because I'm just surprised that there's not. But it was probably long ago, and who even knows what happened back then?
I wasn't involved.
And Bruce wasn't involved, so that's probably why. So I get all that, and I have no problem. And I know that, like any negotiation, both sides will get an appraisal, both sides will do their reviews, because that is what feeds into those negotiation discussions. Nobody's going to want to take less, and nobody's going to want to pay more than they have to. So that's my two cents on the subject. Commissioners, any more comments, questions, or concerns? If not, anybody from the public? We did have a motion by Commissioner Flesher, with a second by Commissioner Ayrman. If there's no further discussion, all in favor? Opposed?
Opposed, nay.
Motion carries four to one with Commissioner Moss dissenting. Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, we will move on to solid waste disposal district. Our first item is 15B1, approval of SWID meeting minutes of April 9th, 2024.
I have a motion by Commissioner Flesher, with a second by Commissioner Ayrman.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is amended renewal number four with Tiger Inc. for sale and purchase of natural gas. I have a motion by Commissioner Ayrman, with a second by Commissioner Flesher. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. With that, we will move on to 15B3, appeal of denial of protest relating to RFP 2024-020. Welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jennifer Hyde, Purchasing Manager. So as discussed, this is an opportunity for appeals to decisions regarding protests relating to the solid waste collection and hauling RFP 2024-020. Just some brief overview of dates here. Advertised in November. Proposals were received February 21st. We had a committee that independently scored and ranked the five responses. And that was compiled in an initial committee meeting on March 8th. The committee had a number of questions that they wanted addressed by all of the firms. So request for qualifications was issued, and those were received March 21st. And the committee decided to reconvene to rerank based on the additional information obtained in those clarification responses and reranked the firms. April 24th, the board approved the final ranking that was established by the committee and authorized a negotiation and best offer, best and final offer with Waste Management and FCC for service options three and four. And then May 21st, Waste Management was selected with service option four. So May 20th, I received protests from SEC Environmental Services of the award to Waste Management. They had several issues with our process, and so go over those briefly. First, they stated the committee changed its ranking after the identities that the ranked proposals were made public initially, when at the first meeting, it was just referred to as proposal A through E. That was not correct. The committee members knew all along who each of the proposals were from, so that didn't impact their decision. Second complaint was that SWID staff didn't consider the changes that are going to be necessary to Waste Management's delivery of service based upon their new low price. They're asserting that they're going to have to make some changes. We made it pretty clear in the best and final offer that we were not going to be accepting any changes. You have to uphold your proposal as submitted. Another issue was that the BAFO process and the release of the original price proposals allowed Waste Management to undercut FCC's price. That's not really a procedural error. We were required by statute to release the pricing after 30 days of receipt. So that's not something we can uphold. They say that offers to Waste Management and FCC to submit best and final offers violated the direction of the board. That's also inaccurate. The board approved the staff's recommendation to pursue simultaneous negotiations with the top two firms and to obtain their best and final offer. And finally, they stated that the staff's recommendation to the board for the May 21st meeting was misleading. The content of the staff report's not really a procedural issue that I could review or score on, so. In all, the FCC protest was denied, and they were notified of their right to appeal. So at this time, I'd like to ask the board to hear FCC's appeal and then either uphold or deny the appeal. If the appeal's upheld, we'll need the board to provide direction in their protest. FCC had requested a couple, two different options for remedy. One is to cancel the award to Waste Management and reissue the RFP, or to issue a new request for BAFO and allow proper and fair negotiations. So with your permission?
Yes, thank you. FCC, come on up and we'll hear your appeal. Either one.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name's Charles Merkley. I'm Vice President of Business Development for FCC North America. And I want to start by saying, and emphasizing, FCC has consistently looked out to be a partner of Indian River County. And I have a bunch of material here, so I apologize looking down, reading. But it's always been in the forefront. And with our protests, we aim to highlight some unfair and flawed information on the current RFP process. And as stated, cancel this RFP and reissue a new one, there's plenty of time. And I think today, you have the ability to correct some mistakes that were made. And we'll lay those out as we go. This will ensure the county makes a right decision over a long period of time. This could potentially affect your decision-making for 10 years to come. Now, talking about the committee and the selections, FCC was ranked number one all the way through, first, second, and then during the second, on all options, I might add. And during the second committee, surprisingly, after some questions that were submitted that were all available within everybody's technical document, the scores and the reranking changed. FCC was still number one, and always number one. But Coastal fell to third. And the only logical reason we can figure why the proposed recommended staff proposer is in second, to get back into the game. The committee clearly ranked, not once, but twice, the best proposal, the best pricing, and FCC was always that. So getting back to the actual protest, we have some concerns with that. We filed all the protests timely, and as a point of clarification documented by emails from your purchasing director, a point of clarification on the proper time and procedure to have these protests submitted. We have, as I stated, documented the times, laid out by the hour and by the minute when that should be in. So we strongly disagree with the fact that we were not timed. One of the things that we ask you to consider today, whatever your decision may be, FCC came here as a future partner in the spirit of providing your residents the best qualified proposal. And I will state again for the record, not once, but twice, your committee voted that way, until the BAFO came about. So my understanding on the 24th, you voted. The key words here is to negotiate and provide a BAFO. The negotiations never happened. We got a letter stating the only option you have is to provide a BAFO, best and final offer. Well, that just turned this RFP into an invitation to bid, because now we're just bidding price. We have thrown out the technical part of all of this. And again, we were voted the most resourceful by your staff evaluation committees. That's now out the window, and now we're just into a bid. So once we get into a bid responsibly, we did make some changes. Minor, because we provided you our best price the first go-around, like an RFP should be. So when we did this process, one of the things we can't understand, and we're going to ask and request for today, is your staff didn't take into consider all the pricing components. For example, your commercial businesses are going to take a double price increase on their current rate. They are taxpayers, too. They're taking it on the back because that price was never adjusted. So when you go and vote on a new opportunity with a proposed staff recommendation, mind you, your commercial customers are doubling in price, just so you're aware of that. So one thing we would ask today, however you vote, and if you continue to move forward with this process, we would ask you to call the proposer up here and explain to us and to you... we would ask you to call the proposer up here and explain to us and to you how they could possibly drop eleven point four million dollars from their original pricing to a BAFO. We just cannot understand that. That's option three, I believe.
Correct.
Option four, they dropped four point one million dollars. So those numbers are fifty percent and twenty-five percent. We would like them to explain how they can do that, because we were told in the letter, we cannot do anything else but give you a new price. So how could they possibly do this service on the first RFP, which we clearly won before the BAFO, and drop eleven point four million dollars? And then on the recommended option, drop four point one million? We don't understand that. We would ask you to bring them up and explain that, because a responsible bidder cannot possibly do that. And you saw the pricing, there was that much, not that much difference in pricing until the BAFO. And I emphasize the fact that you authorized your staff to negotiate and provide a BAFO. We never got notified, only that there is no negotiations going forward, and provide your best price. So in conclusion, I would suggest, as Commissioner Fleischer did at this point, I agree with him, throw this all out. Start over again. There's plenty of time. Every proposer that proposed can get and provide back to you within a thirty-day period, new pricing. And if you would consider that, our second request is do the BAFO and the negotiations properly. Bring the two tops selected by your committee in and negotiate. We feel it's unjust and unfair to change an RFP to an invitation to bid. Thank you very much and we appreciate your time.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My, my name is Joe Goldstein. I'm from Shuts and Bowen. I'm the counsel for the other vendor Coastal Waste and Recycling. I'm not going to, all I wanted to ask is if you could hear from both of us before ruling on FCC's appeal.
I, my understanding procedurally is this is an appeal from FCC, so that is what we're dealing with, not everybody included, unless I'm mistaken.
We have an appeal also, I think that's pending before the commission, that would occur next.
But this current agenda item is the appeal from FCC, or is it from both of them? It's both?
Both, yeah.
Okay, go ahead. I just wanted to make sure we are adhering to the process.
I don't know if you'd like staff to...
Go ahead.
Thank you very much again. Joe Goldstein from Shuts and Bowen, on behalf of Coastal Waste and Recycling. My client is here, Matthew Cowan, the General Counsel for Coastal. To, to use the sports analogy, thank you for the opportunity for having this bid protest appeal. The way I perceive this to be, it's like a video replay in the Panthers and the Edmonton Oilers game that hopefully the Panthers win tonight and becomes Stanley Cup Champions. During the course of the procurement, when staff has to make decisions immediately, and then when they bring those recommendations to you often, sometimes we miss the big picture. And the, the benefit of having us to become here and give us some time to speak is we can step back, look at things in a little bit in slow motion and, and decide, is this decision that you've made in the best interest in the county, in the residents, in the businesses? And in that sense, we support FCC and encourage you to say no. And you should reject all and restart. And, and let me give you the reasons why, and then I'll talk about my, our, our specific appeal. First of all, let's remember the background that we're in. The current contract and Waste Management's your, your incumbent, the current contract doesn't expire until October first, twenty twenty-five. So kudos to the, the county and to the staff for being well-prepared in advance. So there's plenty of time, even without asking Waste Management to extend its current contract, to, to get this right. The, the other big picture issue I, to, to why you have plenty of time, you now know which option you want to use. You, you had four options originally, so vendors had to counteract which option is going to be awarded, which option does the county really want? And so this time around, now you've either reduced it to one option, or you can, you, you can narrow it down, that down to make sure that all vendors are participating on what really the county wants. And let me focus on now Coastal Waste's complaints and why we filed our bid protest appeal. And I, I think the gentleman from FCC kind of talked about some of those factually. The first evaluation meeting was March eighth. Uh, and, and at that first meeting, as to option number three, Coastal was ranked ahead of Waste Management. Everything that the evaluation committee needed was in those written proposals. Before there was rankings, no, no evaluator said, you know what, I don't feel like I have sufficient information. Because that's what you should do. If an evaluator needed additional information, you don't go through and do the scoring and then come with a result. And like FCC said, FCC was ranked one in, across the board. Coastal was ranked at least second in option one and option two. And so by saying we're going to have a second meeting, it gives the appearance, whether it's accurate or not, it gives the appearance that that second meeting was to give the second chance to Waste Management to get into the first and second. And so the second meeting, there was written clarifications, there was no oral presentations, which you will often see of a procurement decide. So it wasn't like, come talk to us about what you put in your written proposal to see if maybe there's a different flavor or clarification. And so that was the first video replay moment. We should stop and look right there. After March eighth, the second meeting shouldn't have occurred. So the second meeting occurs, and lo and behold, what happens after that meeting? Coastal's ranking in option number three goes to number three and Waste Management goes to number two. And again, stop the video replay, look at it. That looks like the appearance of something was going on when everything was already in the, the, the written proposals. But what happened at that second meeting was initially Coastal, my client, was tied for second with Waste Management. In your procurement handbook, it talks about when you have ties, how do you break the tie? You're supposed to go look at the score sheets, total up the total points and see who's higher and lower. In fact, at the first meeting, that was done to break a tie. At the second meeting, what staff did was instead of going to the total point scores, they opened it back up to the evaluation committee members to talk about it. And while they were talking about it, one person raised a concern about Waste Management being so expensive, so much higher priced. And someone from staff said, well, if we do a BAFO, you don't really need to be worried about their specific price. And that comment was said, and then lo and behold, one or two evaluation committees changed their rankings and made Waste Management number two and Waste, and us number three. Then it came back to you all as the board, and this is the second basis of our protest and to ask for that video review. Even though we were essentially tied with them after the second meeting, when they came to you, of course, you all said, let's do a BAFO, and you excluded Coastal Waste and Recycling. Even though at the second meeting, at the first meeting, we were clearly number two, at the second meeting, we were tied for number two. And so we never gave you the opportunity to give you our best and final, even though we were ranked number two in option number three the first time meeting and tied in the second meeting. And, and again, the, the last thing, and again, as FCC, just not to belabor that point, in an RFP, when you're asked to give your best price in the beginning, and then you see a vendor reduce their price by fifty percent in one option and twenty-six percent in another option, they were trying to take you for a ride. How, there, there's no other way to explain it, but when they saw that they had adequate competition, all of a sudden, they can drop their price by over fifty percent for one option and twenty-six percent. To go forward and not grant these two appeals will only encourage future behavior by other vendors to not give you their best proposal in the first instance. That's what will be encouraged here, which will not be in the best interest of the county. For those reasons, you should grant both of these appeals, reject all, start over with your terms clarified, your options clarified. And we appreciate the opportunity to be here. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Himanshu, I have a question. We have had meetings on this process going back to over a year ago, correct?
That's correct.
And as I recall, we have talked about a best and final offer process throughout all those meetings. In fact, I believe we've, it was a new process for us to go through. And I recall one meeting, the consultant and Jennifer, I believe, being here to explain specifically to the Commissioners what that process was about and what the steps along the way were. Is that correct?
That's correct. For the record, Himanshu Matha, Managing Director of Solid Waste Disposal District. Commissioner, you're, you're correct. Throughout the whole process, especially when it became, you know, that, you know, we sent out eighty-seven thousand postcards, we invited the public. First and foremost, that, that was our priority is, is have, have meetings, public meetings to kind of, you know, explain the process of what the RFP was about, how, you know, even the, the process leading to the, the five responses. Share that with the public, share with the, with the commission, allow the public an opportunity to ask questions about some of the decisions that we're looking to make. And ultimately, we wanted, you know, the, the lowest price and the best service, if you will, for, for our residents. And, and I, and I'm proud of the process that, that we, we undertook. And I, 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 I understand the frustration of others. We certainly don't want to discourage any of these companies in the future from, from not participating in our process. I think we did a, a pretty fair and transparent process, and again, I stand, stand behind it.
When we asked, or when we gave direction for the best and final offer, the organizations of which we were requesting that, which was Waste Management and FCC, were not allowed to change any terms of those original contracts. The only thing they could do was adjust pricing. Can you explain that a little bit?
That's correct. So, um, after board direction about negotiation and, and best and final offer, we met with the county administrator, the county attorney, and, and, and the selection committee, if you will, and I think the negotiation team that we, we kind of had in queue. And we, we all looked at it and said that ultimately, the proposals weren't technically sufficient. We, we were not looking to change or negotiate or reduce the level of quality from any of the firms. We didn't want less trucks, we didn't want them not to provide new carts. We, we weren't, you know, there were no matter of sort of technical changes that we were willing to entertain. So when it came down to that, and it says, well, the only thing we're, we're really looking at is a best and final price. And we wanted to expedite the process, not, not waste their time, not waste our time, and ultimately not waste the Commissioners' time. So we, we clearly issued a letter to both companies and said, you know, you have an opportunity to provide your best and final offer. If you, if you consider your original price your best and final, that's okay. You're not obligated to respond. If you want to respond, the only thing you could do is reduce the price. You cannot increase in one category and decrease in another. Or you can use the same spreadsheet that you used before, only for option three and four. And you have the ability to reduce your price, whatever you're comfortable with. We didn't, we didn't, you know, specify any, any sort of a percent decrease or anything to that matter. And we clearly said that all of the other aspects of their proposal were, were going to be adhered to. So all of the, you know, every, whatever they responded to in the original response, any questions or clarifications they provided, the companies had to, that's going to be part of the contract. We're not, we're not changing a, any of the requirements for, for, for what was included in their original proposal. So the only thing was the reduction in price.
Okay. So just to summarize, so I'm fully understanding, the selection committee met twice to determine and rank which organizations would be best able technically to provide the services requested in the RFP. That was step one.
That's correct.
Step two, and that's what came to us. At that point, we determined or approved the top two to go and ask for the best and final offer from.
That's correct.
Those best and final offers came back to the commission with each organization choosing strategically how they wanted to submit those best and finals, or what numbers they wanted to use or not use. But they were still required to perform technically the terms that they had originally been ranked upon.
That's correct.
And then we awarded a bid based on those best and final offers, knowing that both, both submitters were technically able to perform those. And what, regardless of whatever the price was, that was what they were going to have to perform.
That's correct.
So I feel like this process has been going on for over a year. We've been very clear about the best and final offer, so that should really have been no surprise to anybody. And if an organization chooses for whatever business reason to cut their bid, or not cut their bid, or submit what pricing they submitted, at the end of the day, my goal is to get the best price for the resident and somebody who can technically carry out the terms of the contract. So I'm not really inclined to approve the appeal, but that is my feelings on it. So Commissioners, questions, comments, concerns? Yes.
I kind of feel the same way you do at the end, it's the, the best and final offer. I was very surprised that Waste Management came back with a reduction, they did. I gotta say, I was kind of shocked by that, that if we, you know, like we'd have gone with the original price, how much more we'd have been paying? I understand FCC's question on that. But we did, we were specifically clear on the, on the best and final offer type thing. And then at the end, it is, you're exactly right when you say that it is our job to get the, the best price for the best service that we can do. And I, and I think we've done that. But, but again, I, I, I can understand FCC's concerns with regards to this, about that. But I think Himanshu, Jennifer, y'all are good with everything. I mean, I trust both of you explicitly for your honesty and your integrity. Y'all are both good with this process, how it was handled and, and everything. I mean, because I, from what I've seen from the whole process, it, it has been on the up and up. And I, I, if it wasn't, I'm sure our county administrator or county attorney would have interjected their thing. And I, I think y'all are good with it also.
Yes, sir.
Yes, Mr. Ehrman, I, I, I think the conversation between the Chair and Himanshu distinctly summarized the county's position on this matter.
I second the county attorney's opinion.
Yes, I am.
I do as well.
Thank you. So I, I, the only thing I was uneasy with this was the price that Waste Management did come back with a reduction in the price. I, I do feel like it was a, a, a little strange that there was that much of a gap and they were able to drop it that much. But in the end, Waste Management's capable, they proved themselves capable. They did come in with the best and final offer on this, so I don't see what the use is to go back and try to do this all over again. Madam Chair, it was brought up by the appellate that I had suggested to throw all out and rebid all. And that's fair game, it was said. I just wanted to clarify that during the process, and I did share it with Himanshu afterwards as well, that when we were doing this, we were negotiating price and services at the same time and design of methodology at the same time. And I didn't care for that element in the end, which was then offered to the top two to give a BAFO. I think it all changed when one of the applicants flatlined their offer. And again, I was thoroughly surprised to hear that the offer from Waste Management had been so greatly reduced. And again, one could only speculate to say, wow, were they actually going to ask for that price in the beginning? Or that was... When you're realizing that they're getting a different type of product now being delivered, that there'll be no billing involved, and there are greater reductions. Again, I'm not going to make their business decision for them. I am not going to point out any reasoning behind their business decision. But I don't assume that they're in the business to make the loss up in volume. It's just not going to happen. So, with that, in evaluating what was discussed, I have to say the appellate did not reduce their rate, if I'm correct, on the BAFO. Is that correct? It was so very slightly, almost unnoticedable, undetectable. And then, you have an overwhelming reduction. So, yes, as that was happening, I would have preferred to let everybody bid again because of the manner in which we did that, about the titration of the product in which we were seeking for our citizens. Now, we're deciding in this faction. Now, we're going to move on to the style and type. And it was probably one of the more complicated public negotiations as far as... And I felt that should have been part of the package and negotiated prior to, and not as we were actually going through the motion. But with that said, I'm now comfortable with the outcome. I feel, and consulting with the attorney, that all was right and just and fair. And I just wanted to explain the comments and the comments that we were reminded of during the conversation today, as well as the previous meeting.
Thank you.
Madam Chair. I think that, you know, we had the several meetings. We chatted about the process. This is about the process. We vetted the process. We had professionals say that the process was acceptable. We have tenured employees, and I've said this plenty of times from here, that we have professionals working at this agency. And at some point, we have to trust what they do. You're talking about tenured employees that are going to do the right thing, particularly if they're at will, each and every time. So, with that, we have to have faith in our process and faith in our employees that are professionals indeed. And with that, I motion that we reject both of these bids, both of these appeals.
All right. Here's a motion by Commissioner Lohr to deny the appeals, a second, or reject the appeals, a second by Commissioner Fleischer.
Which one is the question?
Yes, Commissioner Moss.
Of Himanshu. With the bid, the final bid by Waste Management, do you feel confident that they will be able to fulfill the technical requirements?
Yes, I do, Commissioner Moss, I do.
You do? Okay, thank you.
And Himanshu, just to follow up. If they don't, what happens?
We have made this contract, and the draft contract was available right from the initial RFP process. We have provisions in the contract that have really made more stringent requirements, more penalties, if you will, for not adhering to the contract requirements. And so, we're going to hold our feet to the fire in terms of performance.
As Madam Chair, as a follow-up, Himanshu, can you share with us and share with the board, have you been in a position under the current contract to hold the provider responsible and accountable?
Yes, I have.
Thank you.
All right. If there's no further discussion, anybody else in the public? Seeing none, Commissioners, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Is there anything else for the good of the order? No? I mean, seeing none, we stand adjourned.